I'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Does everybody have a chance to read the minutes from the last meeting?
Yes, I have a question under the, down under the Brian and Alice and Disney email, the very, very last vote we took, the way that it's worded. The first one said to pursue for the full amount, if recovered, will be split proportionately between city and borough manufacturing. And then it looks like there was an amendment of full amount to pursue. Then it says anything recovered would be split between the city of Hillsborough and borough manufacturing. I don't know if we wanted that actually amounted to what the amounts were. It's not split in, you know, it's to pay back borough manufacturing what they paid in.
But I think it was meant to split equally. Like if we got a thousand dollars, they'd get proportionally back what they... So if we got a thousand dollars back, they would get...
Yep, that would pay them back that 500 and 500, but up to what point?
To what they paid.
Okay, so it doesn't need to specify that or anything is my question.
I don't think we... It's up to you guys, but I guess I thought that was the understanding of it. Would be only be paid what they paid.
Yeah, up to what they paid, yeah.
So whether you want that added in for clarification? I think that was the intent of the motion.
Yeah, I think the intent was there just in case there's... I just don't know who would ask that, but...
Do you think we need to have it clarified anymore in JR?
You could in that last one maybe, just put payback equally until borough manufacturers are reimbursed in full or something like that, just so it's where the minutes clear.
Sure. We'll get that in there.
Is there any other changes or additions? If not, do I have a motion then to approve with those amendments? Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Dave, seconded by Nicole. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. Motion carries. Presentation of the bill. If there's no questions or additions, do I have a motion to approve?
Is the ARC GIS just an annual subscription?
It was when we had it in Harwood.
I would assume so, yes.
I've never seen it on board, so...
Maybe it was billed in with something else, you didn't look at that specific line. I remember seeing it before. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
Jason makes the motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Paul. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. Motion carries. If everybody's okay with it, we'll skip to five and do the tax equalization meeting right now. So we'll open up the tax equalization meeting at 6:35. But you gotta be in the microphone.
Oh, man.
Sorry.
Alright, so Hillsborough ended around 92% on our sale ratio this year, which is really good. So the only adjustments made this year for any exemptions ending remodeling or new construction. We had two new home exemptions that will be in effect for 2024 and 2025. The last five Jordal townhouses start their pilot this year. And that'll go for five years, so the values on those came off this year. We had one new commercial improvement exemption start this year at the Heartland Clinic. Two residential improvement exemptions came off this year. There are still three in effect. One will end after '24 and two more will end after '25. Currently have four rent zone exemptions in place. One will end after 2024 and then three others will end after 2025. I have some exemptions to have approved. We got Russell Hansen, Mel and Judy Erdman. One for, two I guess, for Sanford, the Trail Historical Society, and then the Senior Center. Oh, and Learning Circle. We have a few others that we did not receive yet, so if we do get them in, and I think reminders have been sent out, we can get those approved at the county level instead.
So what do the exemptions mean?
So there are, so like the Learning Circle, since it's a daycare, the building itself can be exempt, but the land isn't. And then we also have wheelchair exemptions, so if you're permanently in wheelchair or legally blind, it's just a flat $100,000 taken off the value of your house.
Okay, so we have the exemptions. Do I have a motion to approve the exemptions that we do have?
Make the motion approve.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Moved by Nicole, seconded by Dave to approve the exemptions that are submitted. Any other discussion? Nicole?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Any yes for me? Motion carries. That's all you have?
That's all I have, so unless there's some questions.
Okay.
Otherwise, the idea is to have a motion to approve as presented and...
I should ask, is there anybody in the audience that'd like to talk on property or tax equalization?
I received a letter, which is why I'm here.
If you wanna come up to the mic.
Sure. Sure, I didn't know it was like this. I just thought I'd talk to the owners. But no, I mean, I just purchased a home here in Hillsborough.
Could you give us your name and house?
Oh, sure. My name is Michael Sobo. I live in 502 Orchard Street Southeast. The old Jerrys place, I believe.
Yeah.
So yeah, so I bought the house in October and I got this letter in the mail saying that the taxes were gonna go up by 21% because the unfinished basement that was previously left out. And I disagree with that. I don't believe my basement is finished. I believe it's like 30 grand away from being finished. So that was the only thing I had.
What was the ballot since you just bought your home? Was the value of your home close to what the county had appraised it at?
Oh, I mean, sure, I think my house is worth more than what you guys priced it, but the reason that it's going up is because of the finished basement.
But that's one reason, but if your value changed, ultimately it's gonna go to whatever's close to what the sale price was, so...
For sure, well, I mean, that's totally fine. I just felt that it would've been like a different reason, not as good.
Let's see, we went, oh, sorry, I don't wanna interrupt, but I went door to door last year and on that particular house, they weren't living in there at the time, so it was sitting empty. So I wasn't able to get in and see, you know, was there any finishing in the basement? So when it sold and we found out that there was, that was why it changed.
Okay, I just think a finished basement is like a place that you can actually live in.
It might not be finished per, you know, what somebody might build today. I think that house was probably still in its original 19, late 1970s condition, probably. So it's still got finishing, but it's not bare concrete.
For sure. Okay, that's all I had. Just an appeal, so I was like, I wanna come appeal.
Okay.
Alright, so that's it? That's pretty much all you can do?
Well, I mean, you can ask us to try to change the value of it, but ultimately if, at least this is my opinion, if your value that you have, that you were given, is close to your sale value, there's really nothing that I see that we could change.
Okay, sounds good.
I don't know how anybody else feels, but that would be...
Alright, Paul, thank you.
You're welcome. Thanks for coming in.
Thanks for coming on.
Yep.
So I have a motion then to approve the tax equalization submitted by Michelle.
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
A second.
Probably moved and seconded by Jason and Paul. Any other discussion? Paul?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Any yes for me? Motion carries.
Alright.
Thank you. Tax equalization meeting is now closed at 6:41. We'll move on to the presentation of the March financials and quarterly financial review.
So as promised, I went through the expenses and revenues for the quarter and gave you guys just a short breakdown. I wanted to give you something easy, just to let you know where my areas of concern are for this year's financials. And just to kinda highlight some of the things that I think will need to be, will need to be looked at. I kinda gave out my last copy, so can I borrow some money? Thank you. The front page, you can keep yours, JR. The front page is a, just a spreadsheet of your guys' funds, what you budgeted, what you've actually spent, or what you've actually brought in, and the percentages that correlate with it. For the most part, I'm not too worried right now, it's early in the year. Where I went into detail is in the Word document portion of the report. I, there's gonna be a decent amount of line items in the general fund that will probably be overspent on. So we're just gonna have to watch on those. And it's mainly due to salaries and benefits. And that wasn't something that you could help at the time that you had new hiring happen, so... The other ones that I, anything in yellow highlighted is what I had some small concerns on, or I wanted you guys just to be aware of it right now. Streets, streets is always a touchy one. You only get so many dollars per year. And right now it looks great. The guys have just spent over half of their allotment in gravel and sand. That's really not a surprise though, for as icy as it was this year. Legacy earnings, there's no concern there, but it'd be nice to get an ear tag for those dollars, so you guys can get those spent within the timeframe. The armory, no real concerns, just wondering on the, how to get revenue from the renters over there, Mayville State rents the building. And I looked last year, it looks like you guys typically get a good size check in January and then maybe a smaller one, like in June or July. And I just wasn't sure what the process was for that, so just touch base on that. Municipal infrastructure fund, again, just like the legacy earnings. Just wanna get those dollars ear tagged, so we know what we're gonna be sending them on. You guys have a fund out there for the USDA Water and Sewer Main Project. I just need a little bit of assistance on that one. Just make sure that we're good to go on that. Riverbend, you don't, 525, you don't have any dollars in or out of that fund. It's completely zeroed out, and I didn't know if we needed to keep that open still. I figured if we don't need to, then we can just get it...
That one should be able to close.
Should be able to close that one, okay. The Kingman Sewer Expansion, this is gonna need to have some addressing. Right now, the commission is spending over $59,000 for the bank note or for the bond, but you're only bringing in 17 grand from HEDC. So the numbers just don't add up there, so I, it's something that we're gonna have to discuss. For the water plant, or excuse me, for the water fund...
I'll touch base on that one, just so everybody is aware of it. If you are not aware, some of us do know and some of us maybe just need to be reminded about what it was. Kingman Sewer is the sewer project that was done over on, when Dagelmann and Totalag was put in. There was a sewer line that was put over. The way that it was sold was that those that were gonna use it could buy into it and pay their specials off. Those that didn't could hold off until the end of the bond. So yes, we have been paying all of it. HEDC was putting in 20%, I think it was, or somewhere around in there. So ultimately, which will be a hard day when this bond is up, we have several that we have to go after to pay those bonds off.
Is there a date on when that bond is up?
I believe it is 2028, but let me double check.
Okay. Comes up in a couple of years. And I'm assuming all of them agreed to pay at the end?
2028. There is some confusion as to what it's supposed to be. It's pretty black and white from our seeing of it and what we're understanding, but some of those individuals that own that property now don't feel like they should have to pay. They thought it was sold to them based on they didn't have to pay unless they did something with it. So that project, just so you're aware of how much it was. The bond amount was $887,896.25. HEDC contributed about $180,000. And the city also would kick in if they paid ahead of time. So if they paid upfront, the city, the deal was is that the city would pay 20% or give them a 20% discount, plus you wouldn't have to pay tax or interest on any of that. So that's what the city was in for. And so currently, the only ones that have paid off out there are Aic Country, Totalag, Dagelmanns. The rest have not. And then when Riverwalk came in, we were able to negotiate and bring in the rest down because they were charged a hookup fee as well. And so their special's went down in percentage. But the ones that are left are Anchor Ingredients, Spurge LLC, Totalag. Addition wasn't paid, because there was some land added later on. The Vedderker family land are the ones that still owe. This was as of last year. The city has contributed about $257,000. And that'll keep going up until this is paid off, but we should see most of that back in 2028, or it'd be 2029 by the time. So unfortunately, we have to keep paying, I think the money used to come out of sales tax to bring it back up. And normally, we were able to just kinda let it float as is, because we only put in what we needed to make sure that it was zeroed. And if there was a payment, then you didn't have to pay out of it. Hopefully that makes sense for everybody.
So ultimately, once it's done, we'll end up putting that money back in to refill up sales tax?
Sales tax or wherever we feel best to put it, so... Does that help?
Does this spending, is it pretty consistent for, is the amount pretty much consistently the same every year? Like, or does it change?
No, it's pretty much the same.
Pretty consistent. Okay, moving on, water fund. We did end up adding in a second department underwater fund, labeled water treatment plant, due to some of the reporting that's been requested from AE2S and Rural Water. It was easier to have water treatment plant have its own separate department, then we can track specifically expenses just pertaining to that portion of the water fund. I do think that the revenue seemed a little low for water, so we may have to address, may have to address that after your quarter two checkup.
Have we received? Well, not true up, have we received payments from East Central?
I'll have to look. I don't think so.
Because that'll be a big portion of it, because 40% of our, 60% of our water production goes because it's sold to East Central.
I will make a note to look on that. 601 East Central, okay. I did put group insurance out of there. Blue Cross Blue Shield didn't seem to be included in the insurance costs, and so we created a separate line item for Blue Cross Blue Shield as well. And then the only other small flag was that the chemical line item has already spent over 45% of their budget for this year out of that. So just letting you guys know that.
Is that because of cost of chemical or is it something else?
It could be, I haven't investigated as to why.
Sometimes I think they just buy in bulk and then, but we should check.
Yep, yep, yep. Sewer, no concerns. Garbage, no concerns. It's slowly coming out of the red. It looks better and better every month, so that's nice to see. Electric fund, no concerns as of yet. We'll continue to monitor. All the other funds, 605, meter deposit, mosquito, airport, rec department, no concerns out of those. Out of the park, there is a fund set up for Park District, but I noticed in your guys' general fund that you pay dollars out of your general fund because of your state aid allocation. You guys give dollars to the Park District. So I'm wondering if that fund is necessary to have on anymore? If you guys wanna keep it, or if we should slim it down?
What was supposed to happen in there was we loaned the Park District some money for their new lights, and so that was a way to keep track of how much they paid off. So if it's paid off, then I assume it could be closed, but if it isn't, then...
I'll double check that. They did just send a check, or they submitted a check after their last park board meeting for 30-some thousand.
So maybe they did. But that was what it was intended, the lights would work, yep.
Yes, yep.
That was the intention of it, was to...
To keep track of that.
To keep track of that.
Okay. Other than that, you know, this is your guys' first quarterly report. Is there anything further that you would like? Or do you wanna just do like a light touch base like this going forward? If there are things that you'd like to know, you know, please let me know. I'm happy to build it in. I just didn't want it to be a duplicate of the info that I already gave you guys, so... Any questions, concerns, feedback?
No, it's a really well-done report. I really like it.
So the only question I had is 202.
202, legacy highway earnings?
Because we didn't have that before.
That came in the end of this last year. That was a state dispersment. I just figured you guys knew it would be coming, I guess, so... Yeah, so it's, just like it says, it's meant for street projects.
So it's a new, new fund?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yep, and I made it a new fund just to keep it separate from everything else, so it didn't get...
When did that start?
You guys received that either in October or November. It was about the same time that I started.
So it's not, it's not the same as Prairie Dog?
It is separate.
It is separate?
Mm-hmm.
Do you know if that's a one-time thing, or...
To my knowledge, it is.
Okay. Anything else on that? Does everybody have a chance to look into things like utility bills and accounts? And we'll talk about that as well, because I know Casey... So anybody that is on this list is 30 days, correct, passed due?
Yes.
What I was trying to get straight was how you said it was 15 days or partial, so if they, because I didn't completely understand that, so...
So are you talking about the contracts, right?
Yep, so it's the contracts, not necessarily the, the late, okay.
Correct, yep. Anybody on this list currently? I'd have to double check, but everybody on this list is within your guys' ordinance that states you can't be more than 30 days delinquent on your utility bill. You know, this list will go down pretty quick. Sarah sent letters out about it. Last time it was about the same length and we only had to do five shutouts last month. It's the, it's the contracts that we do feel take quite a bit of effort. Right now, we've got five, five contracts, so not a whole lot. It's pretty minimal. But it is a lot of, you know, a lot of payments don't come in on the dates that are requested. All of these contracts we set up because they either A, had contracts prior and didn't follow them, or B, they were, you know, kinda struggling, and this was prior to this, you know, this timeframe. So for those who had a contract and did not follow their original contract, we made a new one stating that they can hold off on their delinquent amount, that that would be split up into the six months that was allowed by commission. And those payments for the delinquent amount is due on the first of each month, and then they have to follow that up with their current bill on the 10th of each month, which is due on, or which is stated on the postcards. Quite a few times though, Abby and Sarah will get phone calls requesting extensions on both dates. And it's, it's just a lot to keep track of, and we don't want to get in the same situation that we just dealt with at the last meeting. We just would rather have people follow the 30-day ordinance and...
So get rid of the contracts?
I would, I think it would be a nice idea to be done with contracts after these five are done. That's what we would like.
Because the intent was so that they could be helped, let's say they got behind, they needed a little because of something. But then if they didn't follow the contract, the elect, it says in the contract that their electricity would be shut off immediately, so... If we're gonna have the contracts, we have to make sure that if they don't pay them on time, that you guys are telling the guys to shut them off. No extension, no nothing.
Yep.
No second contract.
No second contract?
No, nothing. No, it is, this is a, this is their last, because it was meant...
It's meant to be favorable and help them if they were struggling.
If Jason ended up having cancer and had to quit working and didn't have a chance, then he could come in and say, hey, this is the issue. This was meant to help Jason out so that he could get through it, and what he could afford and do not, like, keep them going along and along and along.
It wasn't to just, you know, they, the delinquent along, then the one that was to help the people that were in hardship. But then paid both payments where they were supposed to. And if they did that, they were okay.
And if they ever failed on the contract, then they had, if they missed any payment, then to get their power back on, they had to pay the full amount. What was it, current due plus what was passed due?
Yep, and that's still stated in all of their, all of the new contracts too. It's, I think it's been difficult because they have been given, you know, the slight extension once, so they'll ask for it again. So that's, that's where it's been difficult. Yeah, well, we're happy to do it either way, as long as you guys tell us what to enforce.
Because prior, what, and this is what I see and I don't like... Because prior, what, this is what I see and I don't like. So, number sixteen came in and they have a hundred and forty-nine dollar bill, but they only paid a hundred of it. Well, that was the meant, that was the point of the contract, was so you guys weren't keeping track of this. Either you paid it all, or you were on a contract, even if it was a two-month contract or whatever. It was so that it was in writing, so that I think this got into a slippery slope where, where only this got paid off a little bit here, and then we ended up getting, and pretty soon this snowballed. This may be number two, that the fifty turned into five hundred and fifty the next time, or a couple times down the road, because we kept letting them just pay a little bit, while they never paid the late. They just kept current.
Yep. Yeah. I can double check on this list. Yeah, from what I understand, most of these are just the thirty days. It's just the five that we have on contract that, you know, we've been struggling with, so.
So, for example, if number twelve didn't pay their, couldn't pay it, they not come in and pay two hundred dollars of it, it should be, okay, if you're not gonna pay it all, you can go on a contract, when are you gonna pay it off by? And if they, at any point, don't follow that contract, then the power goes off, or utilities go off.
Okay.
They don't get a second contract.
And they don't get a second chance.
Okay.
Because we didn't want, this is what I didn't, personally, when I started, I didn't like seeing this where, you know, because then it puts our, you guys in a hard point.
Yes, yep.
So that was the point of getting away from this, going just to the contract. It's written. Nobody can say, well, you said, no, it's in the contract.
So if these five, they were all under contract, and they signed a new contract, we let them do a new one?
Yes.
Yeah, so my thought is they get that one chance, and if they don't do that, and if they, I think too, if it gets to the point where they come in and they pay it off, and then in three months, we're in the same boat, we should maybe look at even limiting how frequent they can try to do that, too.
Right. And I think we even said, JR, do you remember, if they needed another extension, or if it was longer than X amount of time, they had to come before the commission to, to be able to get the contract, too. If it's something over and above what you guys feel comfortable with, you can say, well, you need to come to the next city commission meeting, too.
Okay.
That...
Because there's a difference, to me, there's a difference between somebody having hardship and somebody just chronically not paying. There's a difference there.
Because what we had seen before, at least I had seen, was a lot of, were the same ones, and they still had that back amount that they could never get paid off.
Yep.
So is that clear? Does that sound good for everybody? Okay?
Okay. Thank you, guys.
Then I just need a motion to approve the disconnects. Make the motion. Dave makes a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Jason. Any other discussion? Nicole?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Any other need? Motion carries. Commissioners reports, we'll start with Dave tonight.
I have nothing.
Jason?
Nice start. You're going next?
Yep.
If we could, I also was, I did meet with the daycare over at the Armory this afternoon, and I did get a couple of quotes, and I also do have her here to talk about some stuff that we talked about as well, and just make sure that I don't screw it up too bad. I'll start with the smaller stuff first. The first one is I did get a bid for the, replacing the three pieces of fascia on the north side there. That bid is nine hundred and fifty dollars from DBM Contracting. You guys want to see it? And then a second one was one of the classrooms, when they redid the windows back in the day, they didn't get them sealed properly, and it's causing water to get in and cause potentially additional damage. To replace the other window, just that they're currently using that one's a thousand dollars from the same company to replace. From what I was explained, there were some doors that were also ordered for the building back in Mike State, and with COVID and stuff, it was, they were told that they are back order, back order, back order, and they haven't come in in several years, so to me, that would be another thing that I don't know if we need to figure out what happened there, or what happened to that money that we had set aside. Obviously before my time, so any guidance, you guys can help with that. I would appreciate it.
Well, that, that north door, that's kind of rusty, isn't it?
Did you put your hand through the door?
Yeah. I don't know that we, did we approve doors? We talked about doors at one time, but I can't... I think we were supposed to get quotes.
No, we, the doors were ordered.
They were ordered?
Yeah.
From?
The lumberyard. And many times I talked to Adam and said, what's up with the doors? And he said, yep, they're back ordered, they're back ordered. And then we got to the point where we didn't think the doors were ever coming again, because it's been almost three years since that happened.
I guess I, it's been a while.
That's kind of what I gathered.
It was just something that was brought up in conversation today that...
We should get a, we should get a new quote. Then we should get new quotes to see.
So, all right, we can do that. Two things that they brought up, and feel free to stand up and correct me if I mess this up at all, but the daycare has received, applied for a grant and received a grant that would allow them to redo the kitchen area. They're required by new, the new regulations. They need a, a three-bend sink in order to be in compliance to even use the kitchen. What they're proposing is, with our approval, they would, they would be willing, depending on what the bids come in at, be able to foot the majority, if not all, the, the whole bill to redo the kitchen with their grant. So that's something that I think would be something we should, they kind of said, you know, they plan on being here a long time, so they want to partake in that building. So I think that would be something good for us to also better the quality of the kitchen right now. Apparently, there's been other places that have used the Armory as well for events, and due to it not meeting standards, couldn't use the kitchen. So that was one option that they had, was they had grant money that they had received that they would be willing to take care of that. And the second one is they also received grant money that would cover up to, I believe about two hundred thousand dollars to replace the playground and redo it, make it accessible so that any special needs person at any level would be able to access and use that playground safely. So just, it's a couple of items that they received grants for, that they were interested if we would be on board with them doing it, since it is our building.
Well, I don't have any issues with that. A kitchen is needs update anyway. Playground, yeah. Good grant money.
That's why, I told them, I said, in my opinion, I, I think it'd be, make a lot of sense if we're able to get money, and they're able to get the money to redo that stuff. It saves us having to look at it potentially down the road.
I think the, the two bids, being that it's gonna be hard to find a contractor, if that contractor's willing to do it, we could approve those, and then if the rest, just come back with what it would cost us.
And that's what they're looking, I'm sorry, and that's what they're looking for tonight, is for us to give them the go-ahead to look for bids.
At this point, the remodel is, we're partaking of that we would pay for the entire remodel. We just need your approval to be able to go ahead with communication with Jason as to what the plan was to do it, because we're looking at, like, removing the entire kitchen, redoing the floors.
Gotcha.
Bringing in all stainless steel, and then, either a three, we're looking at maybe a corner, adding two more sinks, or just doing a whole new one part. So then there'd be plumbing, we'd have to, one of the fridges, so there'd be electrical, but we're hoping that with the grant funds we were, we would be able to pay for the entire remodel. Once we got bids, we told Jason we'd come back. If it ended up being over what we have, then possibly talking to you guys about maybe helping a little bit. But the plan right now is for us to pay for the entire remodel.
Okay.
My assumption is the kitchen was inspected, right? So it'll be inspected again after the remodel as well.
We had our health inspection in, like, February-ish, and they said the state is no longer allowing us to be grandfathered into not having them, so they gave us six, six or eight months to become compliant with it.
Okay.
So, yeah, when we're due for our next inspection, they usually inspect twice a year.
They'll come back.
We'll, by August, we'll get another inspection, and he'll be looking for completion, and we're looking at the third week of August, I think, is when we were looking, because we're shut down for half that week, so they'd have almost a week to get in there and do it.
Sure.
Sad part about it is, there's no room to make it bigger. That's...
We'll lose counter space, but that's where we were looking at maybe doing the, because we already have the two sinks here, so that's fine. We just, we have to add one more sink on to make it like the commercial style, if you didn't have the dishwasher, and then we need a, a separate hand washing sink. So whether we put in two more sinks, or we add on to the one sink, and then put a hand washing sink on the other corner, like, but we will lose some counter space, because the fridge will have to be moved.
Yeah, I just wish there was a way we could make that, doing all that work to make that kitchen a little bigger, because it is, you know, just a...
Well, we could go outward, you know, we could take all time to help and move outward, but then we would definitely be forced to do that.
We'd lose that lobby area probably as well.
Or into the lobby. Yeah, I mean, we could go either direction, but then we're talking about tearing a major wall down, so that would be the only thing. But yes, that could be an option.
Okay, do I have a, there's no other question to motion? First, to approve the two bids. Make a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Moved by Paul, seconded by Dave, to approve the two bids for the window and the flashing. Is there any other discussion? Paul?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
And a yes for me. Motion carries. And then approval, second would be a motion to approve for the Bayville State to do the playground and kitchen, and if the grant funds exceed, then come back to us. I'll make the motion. Dave makes the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Nicole. Any other discussion? Nicole?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
And a yes for me. Motion carries. Anything else?
Just have a couple of little things, yeah, on the Armory. I think if I recall correctly, we're working still on getting cleaning bids, but one thing that was brought up was, as far as get, events and after events, I know we do a deposit. Who's responsible for the cleaning after any time somebody else uses that gym, whether it's an event or any other type of situation?
I think it's Paul.
Oh. There you go.
Okay, Paul. Phil is so good to him.
And like getting ready for events, stuff like that. Because they've been getting contacted, saying there's not soap and stuff like, items like that.
So we'll just have to try to do a better job with that.
Like?
Being sure when there is events that we are having all the stuff that they're gonna need.
And I couldn't remember the answer, that's why I was asking.
And maybe we just did, when they, when they sign up for to rent the Armory, what facilities do they actually need? Do they need the kitchen? Do they need all those things? So it's asked ahead of time.
And then just the very last thing, I think, unless she has something to add that I missed, on the Armory is, they said that the vacuum that's currently there is not picking anything up, so they were wondering if we had any type of vacuum that could be provided as far as helping them keep the floors and stuff clean, the rugs, stuff like that.
I guess we'd have to purchase one, so we'll have to look into that.
It, it's for the public use. Like, we have our own vacuum, but we only have just a little shark for, like, our classrooms, but it's like the rugs, like, when everybody's, like, softball team comes in and they drag all the mud in, well, then they try to vacuum the rugs, but the vacuum doesn't work, so the mud doesn't get picked up. And our vacuum is too little for that big kind of mud.
So if you want to look into that.
Yep.
Perfect. Thank you. And then, cemetery, I reached, or actually, they reached out to me again, since we got into winter. There's those couple of trees that are by that one grape site yet. I was just looking for advice, if we should just talk to a tree company and get them out, or if our city, I don't know if our city guys have access to a chainsaw, or we do to...
How big are they?
Uh, let's see, I can't even...
The crew does have chainsaws.
And then we could just maybe have somebody come in and do the stumps. I'd say they're probably, I mean, they're not super big around, maybe a foot or so, but they're pine trees, and they go up, some type of pine, and they probably go fifteen, twenty feet into the air.
You could talk to the guys, help the shop and see what, because they could, you know, they got that backle with that grapple on it, they could pick it up, set it in the truck.
I will do that.
But I would check with them guys first.
Perfect. And then, it's on there. As far as Sheriff's Office, the cameras are in all of the cars that we are currently using, so the body cams and camera system's up and going, so that's kind of why I have a list, is I was able to get to some of the other stuff and address it. And then the, the last thing on the Sheriff's Office is, been getting a lot of complaints on the dogs running around and stuff like that, and the issue is, is probably about over a year ago, circle of friends that we have the contract with quit taking any dogs from outside the area, and then now they shut down. Talk is that they're possibly opening back up, but right now, we have nowhere to take any dogs. So, I'm talking with Steve, he was gonna try to reach out to circle of friends and see if that's even something they would entertain again. Question there is what, if us as a city have any ideas, or how much are we willing to spend to hose dogs if we have to try to search and find another kennel somewhere that's gonna take them?
People don't own these dogs?
They do, but like the other night, two o'clock in the morning, all of a sudden there's a dog, and nobody knows who they are.
Maybe we gotta get a little bit tougher on registration, so people, so they know whose dogs these are.
Yeah, it's fine.
Yeah, and, yep, we definitely have the finding options and stuff like that, but when you get a dog like that night, until you figure it out even, a dog gets found at two o'clock in the morning that nobody can figure out where it goes, we don't have,
right.
We don't have the deputies to sit and babysit a dog all night. And, again, like I said before, we've been very fortunate that Journey Homes has helped quite a bit, but we don't have after-hours contacts for them, and I really don't want to bother people that are volunteering their efforts to help the dogs when they have full-time jobs at two o'clock in the morning. So just kind of looking what the cities think thoughts are, of course.
For why, what happens, or what do they, what do they do when you get a dog, because you don't know who it is? It's sent, it was sent there.
We, if we were to have it, then, then the owner, either if it was, if it wasn't owned, the city wouldn't end up getting a bill, and if it was owned, the owner, when they picked it up, would have to, I believe, would have to pay the, the cost for the boarding.
Would it help to have a temporary here in the city that would have, that you guys can place, place the dogs in, you know, if we had some kennels, either in here or in your guys' building, if we were able to purchase?
They used to have a kennel down at...
Behind the city shop. We used to, and it got taken out.
At the city shop. I know, I know the Sheriff's Department has no interest in getting into babysitting dogs. If the city personnel or people from the city would be able to, or want to do that, I know I have worked in areas where the city has taken care of it themselves, and there, it was next to their city shop, and their city employees would go give them, make sure they have water and food and all that stuff, but then you're asked, then we're asking our city employees to, to even...
I'm just saying, if you had a spot, not like long-term.
Right.
If you got them at two o'clock in the morning, you can go put them in the kennel, and then, in the daylight hours, you'd have time to, to deal with them.
It's definitely something I can bring up, that's, like I said...
Put something out on the social media, you know, to take a picture of them.
Put something out on the social media, you know, to take a picture of them, or if you put them in the cage.
Or we have family, or we have people in the community, maybe we ask community who would want to be a foster dog parent for a little while to take care of them.
I'm curious what other towns do. This can't be just an issue here.
The bigger, some of them just don't touch it at all. The long, they just, is what it is, but you know, you have, you have Grand Forks, Grand Forks has the Humane Society and stuff. They have contracts with, I'm sorry, Grand Forks, Fargo the same thing. They all have these contracts, and that's, we were set up with the same thing, and then Circle of Friends shut down. And even before that, you know, they, they quit. I, I can think of two or three times that I called up there and said, hey, we're bringing a dog because we have the contracts. And they say, well, we quit kicking out the, out of town dogs months ago. And I was like, I thought we had a contract. So, I don't, very open to any ideas.
And that's me, I assume Mayville and the rest of them are in the same.
Yep, yep, it was, I think it, I believe it was here, Mayville, Hatton, for sure that had the contracts.
What do they pay to get their dog back then?
I don't, I don't remember what the, if they ever charged for, for housing up there.
You guys did the transportation?
We did the transportation, and then the bills, if I am correct, went to the cities.
Have we ever got a bill?
Because it was actually the cities that had the contracts.
It's probably billed into our normal contract, our policing contracts we never ever seen. Because it's not really split out, it's just X amount of dollars. I can, I think we have an issue, I know there's quite a few residents that have said that, and that's.
Yep. I've been approached on it, in the last week, I've probably been approached three or four times on it, so.
You think there would be two or three people that would be willing to do that? So they didn't all share the burden, or if, given if we were in the kennel without the city, just a matter of,
Just a matter of.
Somebody still making sure they're feeding and laring them?
Should be inside it too, shouldn't it?
It should be inside, that's where we'd have to have, you know, we'd have to spend some money to, to do this. We'd also have to, I mean, if we're gonna do it, we could offer it to Mayville and Hatton, but they would have, end up paying some too. I can look into it and see what else we could, we could do. We'd have to probably have some more on our insurance, for liability wise.
You guys got room over in that garage behind, that's heated? And that's pretty full with stuff, equipment now?
The jail is empty.
Stop it.
So is the city hall basement.
So is the basement.
There's a doggy park in Park.
So is the part I have in my house, where it's quiet.
Jay Art has a nice big yard, like his house. I'll look into a little bit more, see what we, what we could do and couldn't do, so.
And I'll run that thought process by the, by Steve as well, and see if we did look at something like that, even if it was just for our community. If that would be feasible.
How many dogs, like, just on average per week, do you guys end up collecting? Like, is it?
We're getting calls.
We're getting calls from, or?
I'm guessing we're probably getting two, three calls maybe a day.
A day?
Yeah.
Is it the same, how many are the same?
A lot of them are the same, and a lot of them are in the process.
Two to three a day in Hillsboro.
Of, of it probably, um, Coneywide.
Oh, Coneywide, I was gonna say.
Out of those, out of those calls?
Not, not just Hillsboro.
Out of those calls, how many dogs do you physically collect?
We've been very fortunate that a lot of times the people that call them in, if they come and visit, we'll, we'll hold on to them. And it's gotten pretty popular to get people that'll put it up on Facebook and their local community pages, and within hours they have them found. But that's been really helpful, so, and that's why I say the people have been super helpful in understanding that.
I'm just thinking if there was a, you know, centralized spot, how, how mu, how many kennels or whatever, you know, you would want or need to, because you don't want to put them all in the same spot.
I would think like four.
Do they get tagged there?
There's supposed to be a tag, when they register the dogs.
Sometimes they jump out of their collars.
Sometimes they jump out of collars, yes. When's the last time, have you had anybody kind of registered a dog?
And like, I know we, I know we found several dogs that have been dropped in town, and not even owners. And I can actually say it just, within the last week or two, we had somebody, we were never able to find a dog or confirm it. But somebody called from out by the beet plant and said that they had just watched somebody drop off a dog and drive away. So we are having a lot of drop offs too.
Christmas dogs.
Christmas dogs. Yep.
I'll do some more investigating. The other thing, I don't know, maybe ask Steve if you guys are willing, that if you, a little harder on the registration side of it? If they're, if you come in contact with them and they're not registered, it's fine right away, not, maybe that'll help some too, I don't know.
We need to put a little bite in it, because if they're not, if your dogs are gone and you're not registered.
At the very least, tell them, okay, bring me the caller with the, with the registration on it, because, you know, if you, if they were registered,
it'd save you a lot of time, you automatically know who to call.
And there's some other options that we can do that'll make them a lot easier, like there's services out there that are free, that you just scan it and then.
And we, and we did actually have somebody that donated us a scanner, and come in doing, a lot of them aren't chipped either.
Well, not on the chip, that's, that's an actual, on the collar itself, it's, it's a scannable collar, so if it's, it'll come up automatically. Which we had tried to do that here, with the same thing, but that never really, nobody came in and.
Are all the dogs you take to vet, they all have to be registered? They're a known B.
They're supposed to be.
Oh, do you?
I wonder if they verify that.
They have two, that's enough. The vet's not going to. The point of the verification is make sure that if there was an act, if a dog bit, then we knew the dog had rabies vaccine and was up to date. And we even said, I think our ordinance is set that it's not once a year, it's whatever the end date of your rabies vaccine is when you, that's when your license is good for, however long the rabies vaccine is for, that's how long it's good.
Every two years, isn't it?
Three.
Three?
It's every three now.
Yep. And I will, I can say that, you know, we, we've typically been a little bit lenient and at least given them a warning. And there's been a lot more citations.
We don't see the bills, are the, doesn't matter to us. Okay, well, I'll look into the other part of it and kind of.
Is it possible to have one of the guys from the city come in, either weld or something, some steel in front of that big hole in the north door? We're noticing that little things are starting to wander into the entryway through that hole. So, if we get like a few.
Maybe we should just put a doggie door on it.
But how, like, you know, there'd be like the whole, you're wandering dogs, what? You're gonna need new carpet in there then?
In a daycare.
Run around in the, yeah, except there's these licensing things that say no dogs allowed.
Will you see if the same contractor will do that? That's my, the guys are shorthanded right now, so.
Yes, I, I will ask him if I have the permission, I will have him do that too.
Does anybody give permission to get that fixed?
Yes.
Yes.
All right.
Thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
Jason, do you have anything else?
You don't, that's enough.
Start calling you Paul.
I have nothing to do.
Wait, he's got a pretty long list.
Oh, boy.
Well, I don't, I don't know, it should go, it just, depends on how deep you want me to get into it, so. But on the HEDC side, we had talked a few meetings back about incentives, and all the research I've done. We do a lot of the incentives that other communities do already. Probably the biggest thing, not biggest thing, but one of the things that we don't do, that some communities do do, is utility credits. And also, like hookups, electrical hookups, they might split the cost, water hookups. So that's the two, that's the ones that kind of jumped out to me that some communities do, not all, but some do. That would be something, I don't, I don't know if we're to that point where we need to do that now, but that's. But otherwise, as far as like now they're doing the $10,000 for homes, and you know, there's a lot of, there's a lot of things out there right now to help, so.
Well, prior homes, until this year, it was a zero dollar hookup fee. So this is the first time that we've actually initiated, because we've seen that there was a big.
Well, and that's, and that's because of cost, obviously. Costs weren't nothing years ago compared with here now, so.
And I would say what, what we're at is probably half of what most of them are.
But that's, that's about, that's the biggest ones that I noticed, as far as incentives go, that we don't already do a lot of, so. I'm sure there's other things out there that I didn't see, but I did check with a lot of towns, so. On the electrical side, April 10th, we had a, we had a meeting, Casey was there too, so she can give any input to something that I may have missed. Basically, it was a meeting, we met with Missouri River, with the Barnesville Sam, the lineman from Barnesville. And we also had contact from NODAC. We also had a previous, uh, NODAC employee, Mel, he helped us, and then of course Brian was there, Jim was there. And we basically went over the situation that we have in Hillsboro right now, trying to move forward, what we need to do, what we need to look at. They suggested a few things that are pretty relevant right now. They're really concerned about the fact that we were missing two employees over there. And that really, that really concerns them, one being the lineman, and then one being, of course, Jim. I asked why, you know, what, if we're doing something wrong, and as far as our, as far as hiring? You know, are we off on our wages, or what it is? And, and the whole, obviously they were all linemen there, and they said, you're, you're way too bold. You're not gonna get anybody to come for less than $50 an hour. So I'll just, is that kind of what you got to, Casey? I don't know if it's in the budget, or if it's something you want to do, but I think we're probably not gonna. And I talked to two, two people that have friends that were linemen, that did look at it. And they said that they couldn't take a $20,000 cut to come to Hillsboro. And that was both of them, both of them where they couldn't take, they said they could, they'd be interested, but they, they're not gonna leave a job that pays what they're getting now. Which is over $50 an hour, so. So that's, you know, I don't know how you guys want to proceed with that, if you wanted to wait, or if somebody wanted to make a motion to increase that, or.
What, were we on a rate?
Forty, I believe, right?
Yes.
But, you know, we can sure wait, but the longer we wait, I, I just, I don't know, it's, it's, what do you guys think? You think it's, is it still in our budget range, or are we gonna be stretching it, or?
I wouldn't say that's in our budget range, but ultimately, we'll have the funds to do it, we just won't have as much reserve fund.
And it was, I mean, it wasn't, they didn't hesitate when I asked them, well, I asked Casey, she was there, they just, it wasn't enough.
They said our benefits are great, you know, on par, but yeah, the wages.
Especially if you wanted an experienced person, and the ones that I had reached out to that, uh, was, they, they were in that $50 range. That's what they said, that's what they said too, so. So, and that's, and that's a big concern, especially the Missouri River, Sam, that if we don't, if we don't increase that, we're probably not gonna get anybody to even apply, he said. You can get them, you know, I guess you could, if you could get, because you can offer 50, or you could do a range. And if they meet the qualifications you're looking for, well then, you can pay them the 50, but if they don't, obviously you can, if you do that range. My, my concern is, what, what's, what's it gonna take, and I think I did ask that, Casey, what, what is it gonna take somebody to apply? What are they gonna have to see, you know, to get them to even call, to inquire about it? Have you had any inquiries?
Not on electrical, not on public works, we did on labor, but yeah.
So for the two guys, if, would they be ever interested in, if the pay increased maybe even more than that? That they would want to do the linemen and the public works as one position?
Never, never talked about it, no?
I don't think we want to do that.
Don't want to do that?
I think we have too many things that we need to, to work on, and some of it I'll talk about with the budget update. That we need somebody just.
I, I agree with you, I think you would be stretching them pretty thin, especially when they got really into the, if they're doing their job. Now, you could maybe argue that if we're three years down the road, and he had everything kind of up to snuff.
That's what I worry about.
But I don't, you're still gonna be, the only thing that's gonna keep him from not being busy is if we can't find the materials that he needs.
And if we can't find things here, possibly we can, we have other Missouri River, if Sam's busy? Well, maybe they can go to Lakota or Cavalier and help, or Northwood and help out.
And that's definitely, I would think, I've never talked to Sam about that, but I'm sure that's something that, if they were qualified, I'm sure he wouldn't.
I just, that's the only thing I do worry about, is if they run, you know, they don't utilize the full, like, they don't need the full time. Well, then they're pretty much getting paid $40 an hour, because they're not, they're not needed for the full time, you know what I mean, like, so.
But I think they'll be doing other things.
I don't want them to run into that.
I think they'll be doing other things, or they, we may need help with other areas, so.
That, that's, you definitely have a good point, there's no doubt about that, because, you know, we're, we're in a small community, and if they're waiting for something, it's. But it really, to me, it comes down to what, do you want a, on a small, on a small outage, do you want to wait a half hour? Do you want to wait three hours? You know, because that's really what the difference is, because, you know, we always had NODAC here, and it wasn't long to get, and the reality is, we don't have that here anymore. So if you're, if you're okay to wait, and you're okay to piece things together as we go, that's fine. But the reality is, is still, you know, if we could luck out and get that guy that's, that's, okay, he's, he's energetic or whatever, but he doesn't want that $120,000 a year salary, you know, that, you know, so now he can kind of work part time. That would be, that would be a perfect fix, but where are you gonna find that guy? I don't know, you know, so.
How much are we looking for the, Jim's position, what do we, what do, what do we got to wages listed on that?
Starting at 70.
Seventy thousand here.
For, I'm sorry, which position was that?
But I'm just, I'm just, you know, if we can make a motion on it and they could update it, it's, you know, it's, she knows the numbers, you guys know the numbers. I know it's, I know it's tough, it's gonna be tough paying somebody, you know, if they're running out, if they're waiting for something, to pay $50 an hour to go, even if they want to go and dig up help, but maybe that's something that we could pursue, I don't know what the insurance side of it would be or anything. Maybe that's something that we look at, if another community that Missouri River takes care, maybe, maybe there's something that they could go and assist with. Because they're always looking for help, you know, and, you know, of course, you'd have to have that conversation with whoever you hire too, but I could sure, I could sure reach out to him and ask him if that's ever an option, you know, it would probably just.
Well, you gotta hire somebody first.
Right, right, well, but that might, it might address her concern of how busy they would be, you know, so.
But as, we were once told, we wouldn't have, we have a lifetime of work to get done here, so.
So if they're on, if they're here and we have an outage, is there a guarantee that they're gonna be able to respond and we're not waiting an hour?
I would, I think you're still gonna have.
With like Missouri or whoever.
Well, if we hire, we'd still have to give him, he wouldn't be on call all the time, you couldn't ask him to be on call all the time. You'd have, you'd have those weekends when he's off, you'd probably have to still have Barnesville or NODAC come in and help, because obviously you can't. Until Brian gets, the more Brian gets skilled, and that's another thing too, is if we have a lineman here, that's gonna get Brian more, it's gonna get him moved along on his apprentice lineman a lot faster, and he gets to the point where he can now maybe, you know, he can maybe, because he's familiar with enough, maybe he could, you know, something small, he could, he could do, he could be walked through or something like that. Well, all I know is we don't really, if we don't have anybody here, we really don't, we live in our options.
Well, and there's also, we forget about Halsted, and has their own utilities as well that we never talk about, I believe as well, so. So there's other options around coast that we could look into.
Requires two men to be on a, on a truck, can't just have a lineman all by himself on, on calls.
No. Well, I'm guessing it depends on what it is, you could easily have one of the shop, one of the, whoever's on call with the city, I'm sure goes out now, so.
Well, I, when I'm.
Who was all there, you had one on the road by your place, was it just Sam or not?
No, there was, uh, everybody was there, except for Jay.
I don't know, NODAC came down the one time when there was, it was right over here, they had, NODAC had two guys and plus. I don't know, Nodak came down the one time when there was, it was right over here, they had, Nodak had two guys and plus Brian was there too, you know, so.
That's my question is if we, do we know the requirements? Do we need, do we need a lineman and do we need a ground man that's got the?
That's what Brian.
Experienced, yeah, well, that's what I'm, that's what I'm asking.
And you're gonna, and a lot of your work you're gonna be doing, you're still gonna have to bring in somebody from either Nodak or Sam or one of them guys, they're still gonna have to come in because there's a lot of stuff that you're gonna have to require to have too. But if we have one, it's gonna be a lot easier to send one person up, whether Sam comes by himself or whoever, that's gonna, you know, they might, they might be able to find a way to let one come up and help versus two of them, you know, it's, you know, that's all things we have to work, but but I just look at it from the standpoint, if we don't have one, we're really, we're really limiting what we want and 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 I guess it comes down to people, I keep repeating myself, but it's a time thing, you know, it's gonna, we know it's gonna. If it's something small, I hate to have to wait for something, if it's just something small that, you know, because, you know, Jim and all them guys have been doing a lot through the years and obviously it's been handy with Nodak here, it's gonna be. Until we get Brian up and trained, it's gonna be tough, so.
Hold on, will that save you?
Probably, I'm guessing it'd take a couple of years, so.
Depends on how much experience.
How much, and this is another thing too that Sam said, is the more you can get him going, because it's hours, can't remember how many hours, it's a whole year, basically a whole year hours, two thousand or whatever, I can't remember, but and don't quote me on that, but it takes a lot just to get that, so. And he hasn't got, he says that's another problem you're gonna have is it's gonna take him to turn to get, to get there if you don't have somebody here to get him the hour, help him with the hour, so. But that's, I don't know what your thoughts are.
I think we should go at least fifty five. But they're saying fifty, we might as well.
Well, there's no reason we couldn't put the range forty to fifty five, at least they're calling, you know, so.
No, I meant starting at fifty or fifty five.
I'm not gonna argue.
Fifty five thousand plus, or fifty five dollars an hour plus, but you guys have to make the motions.
I'll make the motion.
Fifty five or fifty?
Fifty five.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Moved by Dave, seconded by Paul to raise the electrical lineman position to fifty five dollars an hour, starting. Is there any other discussion? Yeah, we'll make it work. We're already into April, so we had budgeted the whole year, so that'll help, so.
And then.
Would that come straight out of our electrical fund?
It'll be all out of electricals. Nicole?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Any yes for me, motion carries.
And then to add on to that, like I said, we're gonna be doing a lot of, we're just gonna kind of be finishing up some stuff they started with the boring last year. They're just gonna do a lot of connecting, kind of finishing up some projects. And one of those projects is the electrical right behind City Hall here. They just redid a box over by by the grocery store last year. And that's another one that's that's scheduled to be done this year. And that's not a big deal as it is compared to the grocery store because obviously if Casey's out of electricity for four hours, it's not as bad as the grocery store being out of electricity for four hours. We only have to listen to Casey, they don't have to listen to the grocery store. Just joking, but anyway, that is, the reason I bring that up is because Jim had mentioned that for future, in an emergency, would we want to put a Generac at the same time back there? Because this would be a, you know, in emergency situations, this everything may be used. If there's major outages or something, would you want to put something that's basically, because he said he can get, you have something similar to that, don't you, on what size? He was guessing somewhere in that five to seven range, does that sound right?
Probably.
You know, he thought that that would be, when they're, they're doing that, that would be a good time to get that set up. He just suggested it, asked me to see what he thought would be a good idea. Yeah, I've never had one before, but, you know, they are a little more reasonable now than they probably were ten years ago price wise. But you'd, you'd probably know the history more of Hillsborough if we've had issues where we need something like that or not.
Are you just talking about running City Hall?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea myself.
Well, I guess it would run this whole, this facility too, so. It would be sized to do that, so.
I know the fire department has kicked around putting one on their building too.
And we could, and I, we'd obviously get bids and everything on it, but if you're all gonna do it, we can get some bids and.
I think you should, that's my personal opinion.
So go ahead and get bids for that.
And then, and you had asked about the streetlights. Brian had looked at it and he said there's thirty eight poles that are in need of paint. There's nine lights that are, that have wiring ground faults that need to be addressed. And and that included issues with them in the pole. So they did get a, an estimate for, and he said, Jim said that he got an estimate for four hundred dollars to rewire a pole, that's pulling wires. He said, but until they do the first one, that's kind of where they're at, because they don't really know what's all gonna be involved to pull. So what they gotta do is they got over, everything's overhead wired for the most part now because all the grounds ones are getting bad. So what they'll do is they'll put in new wire in the pole and a socket also, because I think nine of those are the ones that didn't have the Christmas lights lit up last year because the wiring is just bad. And he estimated four hundred dollars to do that. We could get more, a more firm code at that time if, you know, if that's something that we really want to do versus if we, if we do get the whole pole, it just depends on what you get. It could be, you know, the bottom line around two grand versus up to four to five, Sam, so for, for the light poles, so. So, you know, maybe be beneficial to maybe look at, seeing how many of them we can get wired in and before Christmas and get those working, just, that's an option. And the painting bid was if they, if they came to Hillsborough, they prefer to do at the minimum at least ten of them. And they, and that bid I didn't bring with was seven hundred and fifty dollars, so.
For ten or for each one?
For each one, yeah, yeah.
Oh, seven fifty for each one?
For each pole, yeah, and that would be ten of them, so. You know, and obviously if we did more, maybe that could change, but he said he wouldn't do, he wouldn't, he wouldn't, he's out of grant for, because he wouldn't come here for less than that, so, because they have to bring, it would be a, be a few day project, he said, so, but I can get more information on that, I don't, I don't, he said they wouldn't be available to do yet this summer right now and their schedule isn't full, but.
They have to tend to every one of them.
Well, not apparently the way they do it, no, so they're, it sounds like they, they, they could hand, they hand do a lot of it and they got, some special paint, he was trying to explain to me that it kind of just, just integrates or something after it's so far efforts on. And once it's, so if there's any overspray, it's just basically, I don't know anything about painting, but he said, because I asked him that same question and and I'd probably do a little bit more researching on it, but I thought I'd just get a, get us an idea as we go forward. Do we want to do it?
The restrictions.
Do we need to do it this year? I obviously wouldn't do it until. So I'm sure that we don't, you know, we kind of got an idea on what it's gonna cost, but I'd rather look at the wiring before we did anything. That's my priority. You know, we get, we're looking at here in twenty, what's thirty or something like that, we'll be celebrating, hundred and fifty years or whatever it might be, you know, so maybe, you know, as we get closer to that, I had to paint them then. Seven years down the road, the paint is starting to come off just before, and then we would like it looking nice, so, but.
Well, I know it's not in the budget, but we, Casey's looking to see if the legacy fund highway earnings could be used, but we could also use municipal infrastructure fund for that project to get it all completed if you would like.
I think you could. It says the allocations are made using the highway distribution formula for counties and distributions to townships based on road miles, cities are included. Funds received can be used for any construction, reconstruction, repair and maintenance of public highways, which includes equipment, salaries, gravel, et cetera.
So this is all highway?
Yeah.
It could be used for that. So if somebody wanted to make a motion, you could to spend up to the twenty thousand or twenty five or twenty nine, whatever you'd like. And get them fixed. Paul?
I can make the motion, it's kind of self-serving, but.
What's the motion?
I'll make the motion to whatever that's allowable in that fund, what'd you say it was, Casey, twenty?
Twenty nine. Twenty nine, seven fifty nine, twenty nine.
We should specify that it would be for, for electrical, redoing the poles and painting, correct?
Correct. Is there a second?
And I will check one more place for painting prices to make sure they're in the ballpark there.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Moved by Paul, seconded by Dave, is there any other discussion? Paul?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Any yes for me, motion carries.
And then.
Careful, Paul, Nicole's gonna bring up a pillow on bed next time.
I just basically want to remind everybody that we are. Couple, couple of things on, you know, the rate study is still in the works, I'm assuming, right?
Second half of the year.
So that's still coming and so at that point we should look at, you know, we engineer a lot of things, we may, we may need to look at maybe getting some funds to put in to check that out too as far as the whole system and where we're at, what needs to be done, you know, from a professional as far as balancing load and all that stuff, we got MEI to do a lot of that.
Is it done?
It's supposed to be, I just told me too, it's, it's, I don't remember, it's, it's, it's pretty well done, right? Because Sam was saying that that could be, that he was gonna share that information with a company that would do this if, if we go that route, so, yep. And maybe, maybe, do you remember, Casey, that was talked about, I know that. Sam did talk about MEI, the, the votes that, did you write anything in your notes about them?
Oh, look, I can't remember, I remember him talking about it. Let's look. Those are leaning poles.
But I, I know that he talked about it, if it wasn't done, it was, it was there. It just needed to be basically shared, so. But I will, I'll, I'm running out of papers. I want to keep it all on one page, I'm not gonna.
That's why you have a notebook right there.
I guess, that was from the meeting the other day, so.
Where's your notebook, so you have it all in one spot?
Yeah, I don't see that I wrote anything down for MEI, Paul, sorry, I remember talking about them though.
He has it all like this, so it's all in there.
I get so much writing, I gotta go to the next meeting page, the next meeting page.
Cliff notes.
Okay.
Anything else?
That's all I got, except I do want to before recall on her, has anybody talked to the airport about, about the Millings? Because I did talk to Jay and he said that, yeah, they could definitely use them. So I'm gonna, if it's all right with you, I'll just have him reach out to the airport.
How much is there, do you know?
He didn't say how much.
I think we should. Well, I think, honestly, I think we should look at getting all of it if we can, because.
He said they didn't.
He said we can have all of it.
Except for they have a little, he said today they have some, on some roads that they want to do a little bit. It wasn't much, they wanted to use part of it, so.
But I think we have quite a few places that we can put it to, so.
All of them, I'll give J A the number to call.
Yeah, I told Jay I would get it for him. And then, and then he also would like to, at some point he would like to invite every, like to invite a bus out there to what they did, you know, for maybe, maybe before a meeting, you know, five o'clock or something, and he'd like to invite everybody out on the commission. He said he would have liked to have been here tonight, but he had something going on and he couldn't make it, but he said to kind of want to see that if that would be something that we would be interested in, he'd like to kind of show what, what the city dollars have been being used for. So if we're open to that, I'm sure you'd have, you know, you'd have to put it on as a meeting, but you know, we could, we could get out there and I thought, I thought it would be, be interesting to see what they're doing with everything out there, so. But if you want, I can sure mention that to him or she can talk to, Kyle is the one to talk to, so. So if that's something that we, we would be interested in doing before a meeting or if we want to do it on a separate night or whatever, just, just let him know and see if they can coordinate something like that. Did you wanna talk to Kyle about that part?
Call him.
Okay. Are you guys interested or not?
That would be, yeah. Is that it?
That's all, I'm quitting. I'm quitting my list, even if there's some left.
I have nothing, so.
Well, you should have told me that before I quit.
Okay. I will try to make it as quick as I can.
Yeah, you don't want to fall under harm's trap, right?
We met, Casey and I met with Ida Bailey last Thursday.
Thursday.
Thursday. The audit is pretty much done, they have to send it to their internal redundancy auditors to make sure that everything that they caught is good. So there may be a few more things that will come back, but most of it should be good, all right. The three hundred and sixty foot level that I'll give you is none of this was surprising to me. Everything that came up in the audit was things that I kind of already figured and knew and some of us have learned along the way. This one, one thing that has been in our audit or been dinged on every year in the audit is we do, do not have fixed assets. We don't count those, which that's what we are working on with the, everything Casey's been working on getting the line items of all of our equipment, so hopefully maybe by the twenty five audit or twenty six audit, she'll have it all, all good to go. The segregation of duties, we'll see, which we've always seen, which is not gonna be uncommon either because of the city size unless we want to hire, you know, like five more people to be in the city office, and I don't think that's feasible. The way it looks, journal entries were made, not made, there's not a standard for it, so we need to look at that. Transfers that were supposed to happen didn't happen, so we need to have maybe a transfer policy in place. And the bank recons need to be a little bit more efficiently and sooner. And those were things that we had seen in the past. And why our balances were so low and a lot of different funds are so off was transfers were scheduled and supposed to happen, but never happened, so. That's the three hundred and sixty foot view. But he is hoping that, they were hoping to send it over for that second layer review and then it's one to two weeks depending on how long that'll take. So they're hoping by middle of May that we should have paper in our hands and be able to see the final audit for all three years. And then we'll start on the twenty twenty three audit right away.
Give me like a week break.
So that is on that portion. Some are employees, in the past, we've talked about fifty cents an hour. And I think there was some cute infusion, the pool guys, pool employees maybe got a dollar an hour raise and our pillow court guys only got a fifty cents hour raise last year, last couple of years. So I think to keep consistent, we should stick with that dollar hour raise. It sounds like we only have one coming back from previously in public works. So we maybe should catch that person up to where they should be for this coming year, so maybe a two dollar raise for that person and the rest at a dollar. When we get there, I'm not even gonna think about public, our pool employees until we find somebody for the pool, so.
We've got two, two applicants for public works seasonal. One came in on Friday and the other came in today, I think Friday.
And on the pole side, I reached out to AA two S and Steve and they're working on some stuff, he hadn't gotten it done yet. From planning and zoning, they did, we had a very packed house that night. David's the, the old David being over there and they were standing out the door, it was almost theirs, so. It was packed house that night. They're working on the container ordinance, JR has some things that he'll be working on for him. And then they're still revising, uh, they didn't get much time to talk amongst themselves because there was a lot of outside input on it. So they're still working on that. They did have a presentation from a potential builder of duplexes, or not duplex, fourplexes. Potentially looking in Riverwalk. The section that's right behind, um...
A country.
A country and, yep, Farm Credit, A country and the ASDS office. So that whole block.
The south side.
South side. They were, yep. So they were pretty open to that. The one thing that came out of that that you guys will be, that we need to be concerned about here is that they, in order to do that, they're gonna need some sort of, they said TIF or, uh, payment lieu, or we'll have to look at something. So, uh, nothing this year, the way it sounded to be a couple of years, that they needed to get the ball rolling. They came to planning zoning and basically asked if they were willing to rezone that because we'd have to rezone it as an R2 or it's an R3 right now.
One quick thing on that too. They had emailed me today and asked for a meeting with the commission. Um, I asked if they wanted to have it during a meeting or smaller setting, non-quorum. So they haven't gotten back to me yet, but do you guys have a preference? Would you like me to invite them to the next meeting? Or no?
If they want to.
Okay.
Otherwise, we don't.
I'll just let them know that.
Beautification had their meeting as well. They're working on the tree grant. We were hoping to see a little bud so that we could see what trees we were gonna look at taking out. Uh, that hasn't happened yet. So... May 4th, they're gonna go around and look at trees in the community and see what ones we can take out and kind of go from there. And then look at new ones to be put in. Uh, we're probably gonna be, have to plant them in the fall, which some people claim that that is the best time to plant trees in the fall instead of in the spring. So... So looking at replacing them in the boulevards at that point and taking them out now throughout the year. They're also, they had a concern on a property and we're working with JR in the process of abatement and what to do there. Talked to you a little bit about it, so, but we're gonna go from there. And then the last thing that I'm gonna throw out to you, all of you, to think about, this is not a set in stone. This is not something saying that we're gonna do this right away, but something to think about. And as we're planning for the future and have those things that we need for the future, currently our sales tax is seven and a half percent. We can go up to eight and a half percent. So we could add another 1% onto that. The one idea that I had with that is that we would add an additional one cent sales tax. If you guys are willing to put it on the ballot. Uh, we are a city that could do it without the ballot, being that we are a chartered city, but I don't think that would be the, the best route to go. But my thought process behind that is that we use those funds as a savings or rainy day type fund. One example would be, um, we would set it so that the first 1.5 million of the fund would build up and sit there and only the interest on that fund could be used for public safety. You could keep building it up over time as we're seeing skyrocketing in not just our budget. We have fire department budgets. We have policing contract. Can we generate a fund that'll self-sustain itself or all we have to do is add some more throughout the years? At 1.5 million, if you had it in the fund, you could generate about 50 to 60,000 a year, depending on the interest rate. You know, um, you looked at, our policing contract went from 190,000 when we first started to... I don't know where we're at this year. It's up quite a bit.
Yeah, 200 and some.
Great. So could that be a way for us to help sustain funds to, you know, where you have a sustained amount of money in that fund that doesn't get taken out so that the interest is bearing off of that? Any excessive funds that come off of that, can we use it then to pay for streets, other things without having to go and bond? Or also can we use it to help sustain the general fund, help bring some of that down? That always seems to be the headache of our community. When people come in, is their taxes are too high? So is there a way that we can offset? Maybe we need to build it up to $10 million. I don't know what the answer is. But the end of the day, we'd have to write an ordinance that would say what we wanted to do with it, how it would stay, you know? And I'm, what I'm thinking is, is that if we put in 1.5 million, it can never come out unless it's voted on by the public. And every year or every five years, the commission would have to look at it and say, is there enough? And do we need to build that up some more so that there's enough money in there?
Can you hear that?
Raise your taxes or raise sales tax?
Can we have that much? Can we have a fund like that?
If it's dedicated, then...
If it's not the general fund, we can't have, we can't, if we're levying money, we can't only levy 75% or keep 75%. If it's any other fund, we can.
So if you raise this fund, like let's say for streets, use the money for the streets, but that still comes back as specials on where they're getting done?
No, not necessarily. So let's say we, we build it. First, we're gonna say it's used for public safety, build up to 1.5 million. The rest gets pooled up, but you can't touch this 1.5 ever. Can't take that out. Because the only thing that you can use out of is the interest that would pay for public safety. Then it keeps building your fund. And let's say we want to build a new pool. And maybe there's $4 million built in there. Well, we can now take $3 million out of there to help pay for pool. Or four, whatever we need. We still may need to bond, but we don't touch that fund unless it is used for whatever we set it as. We have to set it up in the beginning very well and thought out if we're gonna do this. But think of it as a, I think we somewhat did this in the 455, but it's not enough. We generated, when I first started looking at sales tax, when, when, a couple of years ago, we generated maybe 300,000. We generated $790,000 in sales tax this year, or this past year. A fifth of that goes to AGDC. But if we had another one set and it's not, you're not taking a big hit out of the, out of the property owners, you're getting people that are driving by.
Off the interstate.
Off the interstate. You're getting all these things. Like I said, this is not a set in stone. This was meant to get your... Start the conversation, you know? Maybe we could get it started by then. But I think it needs to be a fund that is similar to the 455 where it's set up. You can only use it for certain things, but maybe we only use it for, you know, large capital improvement projects. Maybe that's the wording that we use.
Like streets.
Like streets, like... Right. Those big projects that we need to do that we can't fund. And you look at, you say $14 million we're gonna spend for streets. Now we're gonna bond that for 20 years. And we got to try to keep up with all those other things, even if it's, and the sooner that you can put it in there, the sooner that you're gonna be able to start drawing the interest off. And maybe it's in a money market, maybe it's in something else, but, you know, it is very similar, you know, you could say to the legacy fund. And maybe there could be two pools. One pool for public safety, one pool for, I don't know.
Something to think about.
I know nobody ever wants to talk about taking more money, but this is a, there is communities out there that are at 8%.
I'd rather piece a sales tax and a special.
I'd want lemonade specials, but it's...
No, but...
It would drop your special considerably, I would hope. If you could, I mean, if we generated $200,000 a year or whatever it is, I don't know. I don't know what's gonna be. Huh? So it's gonna take a while to build it up, but still if you don't touch it. So, something to think about there. Uh, Dave didn't touch on it, but we did meet on the railroad, or on the, the bridge project. And the, the one thing that they are probably going to look at, unless there was big things, and I just wanted to make sure that you guys are okay with it, is they're not gonna put the curve in. It'll most likely be a straight bridge.
Again, it's not gonna be 27, is that what they said?
Yeah, it'll be 27. They'll bid in 26 and it'll be put in 27. And there'll be a three to four foot raise above what it's at currently. Okay. And that is all I have on that. The rest is all on the agenda. JR, do you have anything additional to me?
Nothing for me.
Casey?
Show off.
Sarah and Abby will be gone. They're leaving for MRES training tomorrow. Um, he'll be back on Thursday. Other than that, I have nothing.
Okay. 411 Main Street, there was a letter sent from beautification. We never got a response back. It was missed at the meeting, but I don't think there will be, be an issue from the, the beautification side. They would have forwarded on here anyway.
Is that the holes coming on here?
No, this is further down.
This is, um...
Towards the city shop.
Yeah, towards the city.
So I, I looked at it. What was the, what's the issue with it?
There's garbage bags in the backyard.
Oh, in the backyard, that's why.
The front yard doesn't look too bad. It's the back.
The backyard has...
The front I saw trampling those.
Yeah, yeah. Garbage in the back.
Garbage in the back. Yeah. So I just would like, our normal procedure has been that, uh, a letter from JR, if you'd like to charge. And then at the same time, we would ask the sheriff department to charge as well.
Is that received into the city?
The...
To the office?
Yeah, quite a few times. He's been, um, the neighbor has brought in pictures and sent pictures.
Is he still living there?
To my knowledge, yeah. According to the neighbor, yes. So, yeah, the neighbor has complained and brought pictures and stated, um, that the trash bins just aren't put out on the street ever. The trash just goes in the backyard.
Yeah, it doesn't make sense. If you got a tow truck, why wouldn't you, if the bags are back there, they just put, they felt they towed every week and a month, they'd be cleaned up.
So do I have a motion to have JR send a letter plus also have the sheriff's department cite?
I'll make a motion to.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Moved by Paul, seconded by Dave. Is there any other discussion? Dave?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Jason?
I'll abstain.
Any yes for me? Motion carries. The cleanup week date, uh, the one that we had sent, they had asked us to move it back to the 13th.
I was hoping, um, Jim would have maybe been here. Um, there was discussion of moving it back to the 13th because the hope initially was to have Countrywide bring in trucks to help the guys with cleanup week.
Yep.
But they'd rather have, they'd rather have it the week of the sixth, or I take that back. Whichever, whichever week that Brian will still be here. They'd like to have Brian here and give up the Countrywide truck.
That's the 13th.
Yeah, it's 13th.
Okay.
Is everybody okay with that? Okay.
So May 13th?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, 15, is it?
13th.
13th.
That's what I thought. I thought you said 15.
Right after. 13th.
The B, item B, I think we covered, correct? Okay. The cemetery, farmland lease agreement, I think we just need to reach out and I think that was one of the duties that Jason has because of the cemetery, he didn't even know that he had to do.
Well, I was like, did I forget something?
No. So, we'll have to reach out to that landowner and make sure we get that done for the next one.
Is that annually?
I think it's every two years or three.
I wasn't sure. I just saw it on the agenda from last year.
Oh, if it's on last year, then it's not this year.
Yeah, cause I thought we voted on it.
Yes. So then you don't have to worry about that.
Okay. So scratch that.
I took care of it.
You did.
Good job, Jason.
Way to go.
You're on the ball.
All right. Hillsborough days, we have a street closure would be the first thing. Everybody had seen those. And if you approve, just need a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Dave makes a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Jason. Any other discussion? Paul?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Any yes for me? Motion carries. They also have a local event permit for the dances, if you guys...
For the 50/50 raffle.
Or for the raffle.
Coincidentally, during the dances, but yes.
As long as it's not Facebook.
I'm on Facebook.
Do I have a motion for that?
I'll make a motion.
A second? Second?
I'll second.
Moved by Nicole, seconded by Jason. Is there any other discussion? Nicole?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Any yes for me? Motion carries. Uh, next item I had put on, this kind of started with when John was still working. He had brought up last year that they had used one of these. It's a, um, a VAC. This one is a little bit more because it's a back end, uh, pressure washer built in, so they can use it as a jetter as well.
It's a steamer.
Steamer, yep. So it's more compact. They didn't have to worry about water. They liked this smaller size as it would fit in the backyards. Um, we, it is in the budget based on that, um, we had put a snowplow truck in for it. They would prefer this over the snowplow. They said they could even use it for, uh, like when they're doing streets and high fire hydrants, they're able to then, instead of contracting out to get one of these to come in, they can use it to clean out the, the gutters and different things. So... A lot of utility work, they would appreciate it for, a lot of man hours, backbreaking labor, so... It is out of Ames. It was the, probably the better shape one that we could find, small enough that they could get in the backyards. And this one should last quite a while. It was a rental unit.
I don't have a problem with them getting this, but my concern is just because we had a nice winter that we, that one snowplow truck needs to be replaced, that one single ax one. And, you know, not all the winters are gonna be like this. And I think we should still look at a snowplow truck. I don't have any problem getting this, but I think we should keep on look for, let them look for a snowplow truck also.
Well, there was a pickup in the budget as well, so I mean, those, we can maneuver that around.
But...
This was a request of all the employees that they wanted, so...
Yeah, I, like I said, I don't have any problem, but I think, I think we, we should, we should look for another snowplow truck. What did we have budget in total for the snowplow and the, um, vehicle?
I can tell you here.
How often do they use this usually, like?
They said they'd probably use it at least a couple of times a month or more.
Couple of times a month or more?
They have one now?
They have one now?
We do not have one now.
What was it?
They've been renting one.
They've been renting one.
Borrowing one and renting one.
Just gotta find where we had, what budget we had put it in.
I'm trying to pull my budget up, too.
They also cited, uh, to put natural gas in town, too. It's nicer because they're not digging. Clean out. Getting a natural gas.
And I think with the money we didn't spend for cleaning a snow, it's not a good look for a, a truck.
Probably use it on gravel, rice.
Yeah, probably good.
Hundred thousand.
For the plow truck or for both?
It was 50,000 for each.
As far as the new pickup, I, you know, they've got, my opinion is, they've got more pickups down there than they have employees right now. What do you mean is a new pickup?
And they would probably take this over to a pickup.
I think so. And we can still look at a snowplow truck.
Yeah, I, that'd, that'd be great. Where would we have the money for the snowplow truck budgeted?
About a 450, is that where you're looking?
450, yep. So there'd be 30,000.
Could that be pushed into next year?
It could be pushed in, yes, into 2025.
My only concern, just to get out loud, is I, we bumped taxes in our budget quite a bit this last year to try to catch up, and, you know, and to make, that we're not overspending, and I just wanna make sure that we're not gonna be overspending, and have to, I don't wanna have to answer for that.
I agree.
Great. Like I said, this was the one thing that they had specifically asked for when I talked with them. And they were even excited about getting something to help them. It's a lot less, like Paul said, getting around things, so I think they would be willing to hold off on other things if they were able to get this.
Who were they renting? Why, they rented a one on a thoroughfare or something?
Um, they used dust for a little while. Otherwise, they'll get a back truck, like Better Girl will come in and do some of it, and so. It was hard finding a small enough one that they were worried about getting in backyards to make sure that we wouldn't wreck. And there isn't much reused equipment like this. Around, a new one is about 120,000. Is there a motion to approve?
They would forego the pickup in this snowplow this year?
I think so, yes.
If they're willing to do that, I'd make a motion to go ahead and purchase this.
Okay. Is there a second?
Yeah, if they're willing to forego the other...
Moved by Dave, seconded by Nicole, to forego the pickup and the plow truck for this year, and purchase the jet, the VAC instead.
Paul made a motion?
Yep. Is there any other discussion? Paul?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Dave?
Not sure. No.
Jason?
No.
Any yeses for me? Motion carries. Next item is Red River Water Supply Project. She had put those in your packet, right?
Mm-hmm.
So we had a meeting last Wednesday. This is a project that's been going on for a while. You guys, um, we had approved it back 2014, somewhere there. The city of Hillsborough stuck some money into it. There will be a contract coming out if we wanna continue with this. We have committed, or what we had asked for was .5 cubic feet per minute of capacity from the supply project for industrial uses. I am not sure what East Central has bought in, if they're also in the project. Mayville is at .5 per cubic feet as well. We are looking at about $3.76 impact per month for our residents. It was on their bills for this. Um, that's how they figured it out, just what it would cost residents. This is just for the use of it and to help pay for the project. This is not, if it actually, we wanted to use the water, then there would be more additional costs based on that. And how it works is they're, started building this, there's a pipeline that they're using, plus the, they did get authorization to use the McCuskey Canal. So the water will be coming out of the Missouri River, or, out of the Missouri River, pumped into the McCuskey Canal, come through, put into pipes, and then dumped into the Cheyenne, which would come down, feed Fargo, Grand Forks, and all their communities. Um, there's a lot of communities that have bought into it. The goal of it is, is to make sure that if there is a drought year, that those communities have water. Obviously, we're not gonna benefit of it as well, that's why our costs are a lot lower, because we have to get our water to come in from, uh, we can get it off the Red, or we can get it off of the, around Carrington area, I think. Cooperstown, maybe.
The Cheyenne Club there?
All dependent on where they were gonna dump it, I can't remember exactly, so. And there is a proposed line that was gonna run, I can't remember exactly where it was at. And so you don't have to decide on this tonight. Uh, the contract, we hope to get fairly soon so that JR can look at it, and hopefully the second contract will come even sooner, 'cause it's like 334 pages, and so I expect Paul to read all of that.
Thanks, Paul.
You're welcome.
We appreciate it.
But basically, what it's gonna cost us is $32,000 a year to buy in to get the .5 cubic feet. So we just need to know if that's what we want to stay at, or if you always wanna go up for more potentially. This is for industrial usage, is what we had. So generally, they're gonna take raw water and not finished water unless it's a, um, food processing type plant. Then they would wanna finish product. So you guys can think about that. No decision has to be made tonight. I'll let you guys look at it.
Come on this last page. Why is Mayville's, I thought you said they were doing the same thing?
They have more residents.
Well, they have more residents.
More residents or more hookups, so their prices are...
Oh, really? That much more?
That's how they figured it out, so.
Wow, they didn't have any more hookups. It's hard to believe.
And they had it built in, so it's a slowly gradual, uh, payment. Uh, you know, 2024, it's gonna be less, and then it slowly goes up to that 376. There's some North Dakota bank loan that is paying for part of the project. Um, Grand Forks and Fargo has split a lot of the upfront costs that have been up till today. Um, like I said, we could go up in our usage if you want, just know that, we need to know that fairly soon, if that's something, probably by the next meeting, if you wanna change the cubic feet per minute potential. It's all about industrial use.
So it's, so that, what are you, what, how are we gonna benefit as far as residents,
residents don't, I mean, the residents could, if we ran out of water and we needed water, that would be enough to supply us, the city. But when, before us decided that they wanted to buy into the project, they dedicated only .5 cubic feet per minute for industrial use. They didn't say residential. That doesn't mean we can't take that water. Our water treatment plant would not process it. There's some other work, 'cause you're taking surface water compared to groundwater. Interesting.
So it's meant to benefit industrial, but it's gonna cost the resident more a month?
That was what it was bought in for, was the potential for the city to do it. Doesn't mean that we have to put this water in residential. It could come out of other funds, but they, when they split it, this is what it costs per, they didn't say per resident, they said it per hookup. And we can give you the full packet that we had, that's a lot more pages, and it tells you how much water is in it.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just trying to grasp, like Paul asked, oh, discussing the residents that, but it's actually the benefit to industrial. What's the, what did the commission previously see as the benefit for?
I can't tell you, 'cause I wasn't on, we did this, so. Um, it, I mean, I'm guessing they looked at it as, what if we had a, um...
I would suspect...
A meat processing plant is gonna take, I think it's 20 cubic feet per minute of water.
I would guess it would be so that alleviates the water that we're using in the plant, so instead of using that on the industrial side, it would be just, you wouldn't be putting the stress on it as much?
Correct.
'Cause the stuff that you may be spending on industrial side now would be coming through here. Needing more water available for the residents, or?
It could be, or, and I didn't even, I even proposed the question of, well, can we take the water off the goose as our water source instead of pulling it off, and they said, yes, you could. This was designed more for, what, the major use of the project is Grand Forks, Fargo, and other communities that use that river water for their drinking water and usage. So that's where most of it's, it's for the dry years, and they wanna make sure that they have water production and able to filter and water treat it. That doesn't mean that once the pipe is open running, it's always going to be running, they have to make sure operational. If we had a plant that came in and said, we wanna use one cubic foot of water, and, but we're masked out on our wells, which we're close to, if I remember right, then we have another source of water that we can use. 'Cause every time that you add another plant in or different things, um, it is a huge cost, or a huge potential water. Let's try and, let me see if I can find that. If you have other questions, you can ask what I'm trying to...
Does, does this ever end then, or?
No. 78, I think. Is that the year they, it's a 30-year note. So it is dropping in at Cooperstown. So either we get the water from Cooperstown or from the Red. They're showing that our aquifers that were around here are close to being, uh, used up. And then... So for example, if we wanted to get a potato french fry company coming in, they require 3.08 cubic feet per minute of water production to run that factory. Corn syrup plant, 2.89; paper packaging, 2.06; molting barley, 1.74; oil seed or dehydrated potato flakes is .3; a pasta plant is .08; a beef processing, a small processing plant is .73; molting barley is 5; and a nitrogen fertilizer production is 12.22 cubic feet per minute. So if you wanted, and if, I think it's an economical thing, is probably what they looked at, is what water potential would be there if we could get one of these facilities to come in. I did reach out to Trail County and asked them if there was anything on the radar that they even looked at, um, and he was gonna check into it. To see what the potential we would need. This is a, we have to lock it in now, and once we lock it in, we're not getting, we could potentially buy it from somebody else that also has it, but... Say if Mayville bought in and they're not gonna use theirs, we could maybe buy their...
What are they gonna need announced, you said?
June, I think.
June, probably. So now's your time to figure out all the questions, and we can, um, they did say if they wanted, you know, to come talk to the commission or any of those things, they would be willing, so.
That would be this group on top here? Are they just people that we're talking about?
Uh, Red River Valley Water Supply Project. But their, their engineer was from A2S, wasn't he?
Yes, the Steve Bruin is from A2S.
I would be interested in hearing from somebody to maybe explain what the other people prior to us knew.
Okay, I'll see if I, what I can do.
Why only Mayville and Hillsborough?
It's not just Mayville and Hillsborough, it's, that's just who was at the meeting.
That's just our region.
Okay.
It is, um... Langdon, Devils Lake, Carrington, Wapton, Southeast Region Water, Gwinnett, Southwest Region Water, Stutzman Water, Fargo, West Fargo Cast Water, Grand Forks Trail Water, Trail, Agassay Water Users, Walsh, East Central, North Regional Water District, Crafton, Laramore. So there's a lot of people that have bought in. This is a billion dollar project.
The ones that you just listed didn't buy in, you said?
They bought in, the, everybody is at that same stage right now. The two biggest users, which is Grand Forks and Fargo, are bought in and in it. I think the rest have bought in for a portion, like we would. Say it's .5 cubic feet, or it could be 10, whatever they...
So pray for rain.
So pray for rain. Unfortunately, you know, there's gonna be a dry year some years, so. Okay. The one thing I forgot to bring up, and like, we'll continue to talk about it now with the public works papers, is I did have an individual ask about if we would be willing to wait, cuz they are, in their current position, possibly could start November, maybe December. And that'd be that, for that last position we just opened up. They said I could ask, there's no guarantees, but I know that we were looking, so.
What was the question?
If they could apply, if you'd consider waiting for them until November. I had said that, you know, we'd have to see what applicants we get and kinda go from there. The seasonal public works employees, we do have a couple of applications, but the one comment from before is what we had, I'd said that we should look at maybe raising, we didn't make a decision on that. But the one is coming back, and it sounded like, from what the guys were telling me, is that that person's probably gonna do a lot of training, cuz this will probably be there last year, so if we can help out in any way to make sure.
What are they, excuse me, what are they currently at?
Sixteen?
It might be.
I think that's what it is.
If I had Tyler tech, I could tell you pretty quick. I could go look over there if you, if you guys want me to, but it's.
It's either sixteen or sixteen fifty. It's not any more than sixteen fifty, I'm pretty sure it's sixteen.
Yeah, the lifeguards start at fifteen, and some of them were at sixteen. I remember those ones, but yeah, public works they struggle with, there's a lot more overturn on those, I feel, so.
I think then, on the pool side, they just had a hard time getting them, so they had to.
Right.
The ones that they did have.
Nobody was applying, so they had to.
Right.
Yeah.
The other extreme, here we can't get them to apply, now here we got a bunch of them.
I don't know that we have a bunch of them, we just have, we have two and we have.
Two seems like a bunch.
I guess.
We haven't advertised it yet, so, a week or two maybe of advertised.
How many years is this?
It's a bunch of them.
Individual comeback?
I didn't realize that hadn't been posted.
We're talking about two dollars, are you talking two dollars and more?
Well, I think we should put it where it's competitive, what we move the pool people up to, cuz they'd be up to, they were at sixteen last year, they're gonna be at seventeen, possibly seventeen fifty, I can't remember exactly where they're all at, so.
Do you have me to run over and just look?
You have it.
Okay, I'll let you find it.
Well, I know, I know at the colony, if you come back in summertime, you get the same percentage of rates that the full-time guys get, if you keep returning.
Sarah thinks it's seventeen, but it might be sixteen and a half, is what she just said.
Yeah, I thought it was. And there's potentially only two that would come back, one I don't think is going to be. Sixteen fifty. Sixteen fifty is what he had, so he'd be at seventeen.
What do you mean at the beginning?
Well, I would say eighteen would be, then you're close to what the pool employee returns would be.
The new guy's already sixteen.
We haven't said that.
That's what he said, no, that's just what he was getting.
That's what he was getting. I think we start them at fifteen, if I remember right. I think so. And I know they said that they worked really hard, the ones that they've had have been, the two they had worked really hard. And hope they come back every year.
They typically get a certain dollar per this.
Previously, we gave fifty cents. But we, like I said, we raised pool up to try to catch up while that. So how it worked before was, public works guys were making more than the pool employees, well, we couldn't find pool employees, well, then we raised the pool employees, and now Public Works is making less than the pool, so.
Well, they can still be lifeguard if they want.
Can do it to for help.
To for help, take the summer off and be a lifeguard.
And they, they do come out and help in the pool, so.
So these two have both returned?
One for sure, just one for sure, that I know of.
Well, I don't have any problem bumping him up, because if he's been coming back four years, that's, it's well worth it to bump him up.
Is that a motion, move them to eighteen?
Yeah, I'll make the motion.
For these returning, do they, do they, every year they get bumped up, do they make more than their full-time staff?
And generally, they don't get much overtime, it's pretty much.
No, like some, I think sometimes when it's raining, they send them home too, if there's nothing going on.
Is there a second? Second?
Tough growth.
I guess, I would think they'd wanna hurry up.
They were so deep in thought, there's a lot of information we've gone through.
That's cuz these two over here took forever. Going to bust me.
He threw you under the bus.
I was talking to those two back there.
You had to wait to hear our reports.
You come here pajamas, you know where it comes from.
Second?
Not gonna get her tonight.
No second? Okay. Die is for lack of second. Anything else for the good of the order?
Well, I would, you said his current weight is sixteen fifteen, you said?
Correct.
I'd make a motion if it was seventeen, you said eighteen, right?
Well, he goes up seventeen already.
Oh, it does, okay, well then we won't worry about.
I'll second Paul's motion.
You don't need a motion.
Can't even get a second where you want it.
Yeah, I know.
Now they're giving him away.
Anything else for the good of the order? Anything from the two reports? Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion.
Second? All in favor, say aye. Meeting adjourned.